Good morning. I'd like to welcome all to a regular meeting of Commissioners Court of Grimes County. It is nine o'clock. It is Wednesday, the 12th of June, 2018. We are at the 114 West Buffington Avenue location in Anderson, Texas. We're going to open our meeting this morning with an invocation. We're going to ask Pastor Charles Humkins from the Salem House of Blessings to open us with a prayer. And if you folks will remain standing after that for the pledges to the U.S. and the Texas flag. Pastor?
Father God, we come again thanking you for another chance to come together as one. Father, we come thanking you for this Commissioners Court, everyone that we see that's presiding, as well as the judge. And we pray, Father, that we can continue to be on one accord. Your word has told us, Father, that these ministers that is ministering in the natural realm. But, Father, we need your spiritual guidance to lead us in every area and every situation that's coming, that's going to arise in this court this morning. And we ask these blessings in your darling son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, and one and indivisible.
Thank you so much. Would you be seated, please? We are now going to move to public comments. We look forward to any one that would like to have a couple of minutes at the podium to make comments. We'd ask that you identify yourself and go from there.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Elizabeth Brienstaff, and I'm the Stakeholder Manager for Texas Central Railway. As you know, I cover a region from about Grimes County up north to Navara Counties along the high-speed rail alignment. I'm here this morning to simply follow up on a letter sent to Judge Bowe on May 21st by Travis Kelly of Texas Central, offering to give the Commissioners Court a full-on-the-record briefing of the progress of the high-speed rail project. I'm pleased to say that the project continues to move forward, and we anticipate construction beginning as early as next year. As Travis said in his letter to the judge, "We are eager to meet with you and other county officials to discuss the details of a master agreement which will address Texas Central's assumptions of certain costs related to the construction of new or rerouted county roads and maintenance plans, traffic control during construction, and the county's review of Texas Central's approach to the design of the certain civil infrastructure." We are currently in similar discussions with Tex.Austin for our impacts on the state's highway system. Also underway is Texas Central's preparation of an overall final conceptual engineering report, which will be included in the FBIS, as well as county-specific alignment maps, which we would like to share with you. These more detailed versions include specific proposed locations of wildlife crossings, emergency response and maintenance staging areas, and other details not previously developed. In addition to the project's design and constructibility, plans addressing safety and security have progressed as well, as has Texas Central's business and workforce opportunity policy. We believe that these various plans will be of interest to you, as well as your first responders, law enforcement, your local available workforce, business owners, and residents in general. The project's design and engineering work continues to proceed on schedule alongside related regulatory and legal processes so that construction can begin as soon as possible. We at Texas Central realize that there are many questions and concerns about this monumental project, and for these reasons, we will continue to seek opportunities to communicate with you and your citizens and offer information as the project moves toward final design. As always, we welcome your sincere input. With that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Yes, sir.
My name's Al Peeler and I'm the Grimes County Building Maintenance Manager. Just a quick reminder, our 125th courthouse birthday celebration is on Saturday, June 15th, 9 to 1. It's coming, it's coming together very well with the help of a lot of people. I would like to just say thank you right now to UBO, Citizen State Bank, CenterPoint is our headlining sponsor, Buckeye Energy, Entergy, Mid-South, Seaforce, Bluebell, Citizen State Bank, Buckeye International, J&amp;B Propane. And if I forgot somebody, I'm sure we will get that on Saturday, but them are some of the ones I have as of right now. Acting Partners is another one that I've been dealing with. There's going to be a lot of fun activities. It's a good time. It's a wholesome time, and the venue is all free. So it's a good time for our county to come and do fellowship and just, and thank what we got that stood for 125 years. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. P.
Yes.
Are there any other public comments? And finally, are there any other public comments? Hearing none seen, and we will move on to Consent Agenda Items Number Three, Number Four, Number Five, and Number Six. Agenda Item Number Three, Consider and Take Action to Approve the Treasurer's List of Claims and Bills. Agenda Item Four, Consider and Take Action to Approve Payroll. Agenda Item Five, Consider and Take Action to Approve Budget Amendments and Line Item Transfers. And Agenda Item Number Six. Guidance Counselor, do I need to read every one of the minutes, or can I just say the minutes that are included on Agenda Item? Great. And the agenda, the minutes that are listed on Agenda Item Number Six. I do want to make a comment on an agenda item, and it is on the 5:15 minutes. The 5:15 minutes. It's on page three, or page two of three, and page three of three. It's the bottom line on the one where it says, "Tuck McLean requested adding a full-time clerk-to-position to the County Court of Law at $12 an hour effective immediately." There was discussion. We cannot view the video, but notes do reflect that that was a part-time, not a full-time. So the minutes need to be changed to reflect a part-time, and that would also be the same change at the top. And Commissioner Walker, this would affect your motion that was made. We said it was to add a full-time clerk position, but actually, it was a part-time clerk. So that is a change to the minutes from 5:15. That's the only comment I have on three, four, five, and six. There's no further comments. I'll move to approve Consent Agenda Items Three, Four, Five, and Six with the adjustment to the minutes presented.
Second.
There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Mallett to approve Consent Agenda Items Number Three, Four, Five, and Six, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any additional comments or discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We will go to Agenda Item Number Seven. Commissioner Dobianski, considering to recognize the following employee from the Sheriff's Department for years of service. That would be Lieutenant Dan Wagner. Ten years of service, Lieutenant.
In 2018, in October, we started this program recognizing all county employees for years of service, and that's Daniel, no, for at this time at least. Congratulations. He has a beautiful plaque for 10 years of experience, and we also give him a certificate from the county.
Do you want to do that one more time?
Sure. Oh, sure. If you do it right here, I can photobomb their picture.
That's fine.
It's going to be mean. It's going to be.
Blasts off here.
You want us to move over this way, would you?
Yeah.
Let me move y'all to have the flag.
Okay. One more. Thank you.
Lieutenant. Lieutenant, keep it safe for another 10 years. Okay. Thank you very much. Sometimes we have good stuff on the agenda. Human Resources. Sure, go ahead.
Something a lot of you may not know, Lieutenant and I share the same office. We don't see a whole lot of each other because we're out working all the time.
Well, maybe if you share the same office, there's only room for one of you at a time. So that's true, too. Okay. All right. Agenda Item Number Eight, Human Resources Director Lucy Pope, considering to take action to approve the revision of the Grimes County Personnel Policy, Section G, Separations, Paragraph 11, Payment with Separation, see attached at number eight. Good morning.
Good morning. Judge and Commissioners, it came to my attention last week that we had an investigator that resigned for a better opportunity and that Grimes County did not have.
Another opportunity.
Another opportunity, that Grimes County did not have a policy regarding payment on separation. So this section has been added to the separation number 11 to outline the process.
Now, this, this addresses terminated employees, but it sounded like what you were speaking about was someone just.
No, he resigned, and he was on direct deposit, and we didn't have a policy. It was just a.
Practice.
Practice, that when a employee was terminated or resigned, if they were on direct deposit, we, we inactivated it.
So do we need to add the word resign? Or, because it says terminated.
We can. We terminated our resignation.
Well, I mean, the separation says, it says resign as well, right? It says payment with separation, so resignation, discharge, termination.
I mean, that's.
But I just note that you specifically said a terminated employee, so no, I'm just asking.
We can add.
I think it's a, I think it's a universal term in the HR world. Terminated doesn't necessarily have a negative connotation. That's just the termination of the employment, irregardless of the cause.
It doesn't necessarily translate to discharge.
Correct. Okay, just noted.
Sure.
And the process is now, if they work for the Sheriff's Department, or they work for Rodney Bridge, I get what that department had and make sure all the county property has been returned, and they've come in and done their exit papers. If not, you know, we hold their last check until, and I do, I will get with payroll and let them know that, you know, if they have not come in and done their exit papers, or they have not turned in all their county property, then we'll inactivate that, if they're on direct deposit, inactivate that direct deposit so that we can get them in here.
Okay.
But we just need something, a policy on it.
Treasurer's offices is okay with the change?
I kind of agree with Ms. Walker. I would like to see resignation added to that.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not in the HR world, but if I were maybe a layman.
Or a commissioner?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I just see terminated, I didn't, I'm saying, I didn't, I wasn't terminated.
Okay, resonate. Okay.
I'm, I'm just saying, whichever way y'all want to word it, that's fine, but.
You could just do a slash.
You might see that again.
Okay. Okay, we can add it. Well, it's a change.
Treasurer's offices, that satisfy you?
Or, you have another word, perhaps?
Or you could use the word separation.
Right. If you'll turn, turn back to the paragraph two. It tells you the various types of separation, and terminated is not there. The word used is dismissal or dismissed. So if you wanted to be consistent, it would be an employee separated from employment. I don't know that separated employee is the phrase you want to use, but that's to be consistent with paragraph two.
Separated employee.
So we're going to change terminated and replace it with separated?
Right, but I don't, separated employee sounds kind of confusing.
Like they quartered them before they got out of here.
Right. I would say employee separated from employment, for what's accounted.
Okay.
Just leave that.
If you were going to do that. But terminated is not used there, and so it's not as though we're using the term terminated to say somebody who has been dismissed, if you follow what I'm saying. I think it's fine if there's, if, if the idea is to have some consistency and clarity, then I think separated is the term.
An employee separated from employment.
Then I'd like to make a motion, then.
Okay. Ms. Pope, would you read what you have now?
An employee that is separated is required.
Okay. Your motion, ma'am?
Okay. Getting back to, item number eight, I'd like to make the motion, we approve the revision of the Grimes County Personnel Policy Manual, Section G, Separations, Paragraph 11, Payment with Separation, with the notice changes.
Is there a second? There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Eight by Commissioner Walker, with noted changes, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion?
There are, just for clerical purposes, two, two indications of the word terminated in there. I'm not sure if the.
Yeah, paragraph 10 as well. For rehire.
Okay, we'll take out the terminated. I'll just say if an employee does not complete the process.
Commissioner Walker, do you want to modify your motion?
No, I said with the noted changes.
Noted changes, okay. Commissioner Dobianski, you okay with your second?
Yes.
Is there any additional discussion?
No.
Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Ms. Pope, I'm going to ask you to take care of Agenda Item Number Nine, and that is consider and approve revision to the Workplace Violence Policy. Number nine.
In each of y'all's boxes, I put a modification of number two. It's came to my attention, Grimes County might want to revise this number two, because we've had so many, I've had five unemployment claims just this month, and if we can modify that number two, I think it would help me try to fight these unemployment claims. I put each of these in, no, this in your box.
Oh, you put it on my desk?
Yes, I put it in your box.
Just to clarify, these five claims have not all been with regard to workplace violence?
No.
No.
No, 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 but this would help me if we did remodify it. Okay, I'm going to bring that back up in just a minute. I want to get this done first, and then we'll, we'll go over.
All right, so where are we at?
On number two, modifying number two reporting procedures.
Okay.
On the work. It's also came to my attention by John Renn that we need to maybe add a code of conduct, and that's what's on your attachment to maybe the workforce violence policy, or we can come back and do this as standalone policy, you know, for conduct, code of conduct for employees. So that's what your attachment nine is.
I mean, all of these things on here are common sense, but I guess if, if you're fighting an unemployment claim, I guess EEO's not all excited about, we terminated because they didn't use common sense.
Unemployment, I have sent them over all the five. We can send them all of our policies, and they keep coming back and saying, you don't clarify, clarify clearly, you know, the policy.
What policy was violated?
Policies have been violated.
Judge, if it.
Go ahead.
The information that I have in my packet, the code of conduct, doesn't, in my opinion, fall in the scope of workplace violence, and I think should be discussed as a separate issue. And without it being clearly stated on the agenda for today, I don't necessarily know that we can get into that discussion. Because, for example, fraud and securing employment, in my mind, is not workplace violence. And I believe that some of the elected officials and the public should have input on the code of conduct that they expect from the employees of Grimes County.
Commissioner? I don't know about all the other offices, but I have an office procedure that addresses a lot of this stuff.
And it's just, that's exactly what he's referring to, that if we get all of the department heads and elected officials' input, I think.
Yeah, I could send it to them and let, and let it over, and then put it back on the next agenda.
This is the only sheet I had, and I didn't remember what it was.
Well, yeah, and that's what, that's what it is all about.
If it's not urgent, could we table?
No, no.
It's not urgent, but I do think it is timely since you've got five claims working on.
Right, we need to get to it as soon as possible, but on the workforce, you know, the workplace violence policy, if you would look at number two, the reporting procedures, and decide on that if you can, and what happens on that also.
I don't have an issue with that. I think the issue is more or less the code of conduct. I don't know what it was.
So basically, the reporting procedures that suggested implement action, or what action, the county, the elected official or department head should do in the event that they believe there's an incident of workplace violence, and I believe asking or relieving the employee's duty for the remainder of the day and notifying Human Resources of the incident is perfectly acceptable in my mind. If there are no questions, I'll make a motion that we approve the revision to the workplace violence policy regarding reporting procedures.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Nine by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay. And that's with the understanding that you're going to put together a code of conduct that will come back before the court, rest review, take action on it if necessary. Okay. Thank you. John, are you still in here? John, thank you. All right, we will now go to Agenda Item Number 10. I guess you're going to take care, or you're going to take, all right. Agenda Item Number 10, reviewing and approve the preliminary plat for the Anderson Ridge Welcome to the Harry Walker Hour.
Welcome to the Harry Walker Hour. I'm David Lilly. So I have been getting a call today, you know, down on the hill on Enterprise. Before you do the section two.
They're making a claim.
This is the Anderson Ridge subdivision. Two lines there, because the guy was taking, he was taking on the two. Overall plat is 143, 144 acres. It's essentially two sections, totally 21 lots. The, we do have representative development group here also to give detailed questions. And speaking with them, the decision to break it into two phases is based on logistics. Phase one includes the lots in the northern portion of the subdivision that all have direct access to a public roadway, and so they don't have to build anything to be able to go ahead and start selling those lots. But phase two includes the new roadway, and it takes some time for the lots to be ready for sale. So it's just a marketing strategy. Overall, the lots range from about 15 acres down to just about 6 acres. This is a preliminary plat, but David Lilly and I have reviewed the plat, and everything they're proposing to do meets our criteria. One thing I might point out, the, in phase one, the 15.3 acre parcel in the, in the back there is an existing home site. That will remain, and that's why the, the flag lot, in that case, reflects the existing driveway, will go in with that lot. There's still some discussion going on with the development group, if they want to have that as a private road or just a driveway.
Is this the drive?
Yeah, for, yes, ma'am. For right now, the language is included in the plat dedication to make it a private road. But other than that, it doesn't really change anything. With that said, again, it's preliminary, it will come back, both of them will come back, at a future date when they're final. I'll be glad to try and answer any questions.
What is the width on the drive?
It's shown as 60 feet.
60.
Commissioner Dobianski, this is in your precinct, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
Your thoughts and comments on this?
I'm aware of the, the property. Actually, I've worked on that property before, and I don't, I don't see any problems with
How many total lots is it here?
21.
21.
Both faces?
Oh, both faces.
Yep.
Now, the difference between this drawing, they're both preliminary drawings, and they look like they're the same.
This is phase one.
Yes, they reflect phase one and phase two.
And this is phase two here.
Right, they, the darker lines reflect the area included in this particular phase, which is phase one.
Okay. Thank you, I couldn't see the difference. Okay.
Get some cash flow from phase one, work on cash, on phase two. I move to approve the preliminary plat. Second.
I'm so sorry, I'm messing up the mic.
No, no, it sounded like thunder.
You made a motion.
I have a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 10 by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. We go to Agenda Item. If we go to Agenda Item Number Eleven, review and take action to release the road maintenance bond in the amount of $850,000 for Crown Ranch, Section Six.
Crown Ranch has recently completed the maintenance period on Section Six. Dave Lilly and I went out a week or so ago and did a final inspection. All of their roads are in good shape, property is in good shape, and we are recommending that the maintenance bond on this section be released at this time. I would point out that Crown Ranch, these are private roads, they're not coming into the county's maintenance system. What we do still go through the maintenance bonding process to make sure that everything's done properly and in good shape before the developers off the hook for it.
I have one question. How many houses do we have out there now?
There's just a handful in Section Six right now, I would say maybe three. It's a little hard to tell where the section lines are directly there, but there's not very many.
Okay. So when the contractor moves out, do they have an HOA out there?
I believe they do.
Yes, they do. I got a call from somebody with the HOA last week to let me know that they were ready to take that.
They're okay? And then it's their responsibility to maintain the roads?
Because they're, that's right, it becomes their responsibility.
Is there a brass plaque on the wall somewhere to remind those folks, or, I mean, in all seriousness, because as people sell and people move in, I don't know that they always communicate that, or, you're a realtor, are they required to let people know that these are private roads maintained by our HOA?
We would hope that it is.
Oh, well, there you go.
Okay. There's, you have the real...
There's between may and shall, right? Sir?
Your Honor, I'm Eric Estes with Crown Ranch.
Can I get you to come up to the podium, please?
Yes, sir.
That way you'd be on camera for the world to see.
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge. It is without question, entirely understood, that the residents, everyone that moves in there understands they are taking part in the community. There's actually a road fund that is set up. It is an itemized item on the closing contracts. I didn't know that this would be requested, so I don't have one of those with me.
That's right.
But I can assure you, that is the case. I recently turned the HOA over to the residents. The HOA had been held in developer control since the beginning of the subdivision in 2006, and I turned it over, went through the entire legal process to do that, as well as the Architectural Control Committee. All of that responsibility rests entirely with the homeowners. Now, I haven't polled everyone in the entire subdivision, so, I mean, folks, literally, some folks live there, and they go to their house, and they go to the airport and fly off to, you know, Singapore or whatnot and work, so some of those folks aren't going to be aware. But of the regular residents who live in the community, it is a very active community, and everyone there that is active, which is, I would say, the majority of the community is well aware of the status of the roads, their responsibility, not only to the roads, but to all the reserves, the drainage reserves, the amenities, all of it. So that's how I would characterize it.
And I appreciate your explanation, and that's fine, that Grimes County has inherited a subdivision that has private roads that aren't maintained, and, you know, we get hit on that, and I can be sympathetic with the people that live in that addition, but it's against the law for us to spend county funds trying to help those roads. So, just want to make sure that when people move into an area, and they're going to have that responsibility, that they know that they have that responsibility, or if they live there already and we're getting to release, that they know that burden's on their pocketbook, not on the county's. So, just want to make sure people know.
What was your name again, sir?
Eric Estes.
Yes, ma'am. And I'm not suggesting anything wrong with your subdivision and what you've done there, it's just that we have a history with the particular developer that didn't develop so well.
We've had a good relationship with Grimes County for many years, going back to when Bill Finley was Commissioner and Betty Shindlip was Judge.
Right.
I believe that we've always fulfilled our obligations and have a reputable subdivision.
Well, and again, if Commissioner Dobianski is comfortable with what's going on, because that's his precinct, then we certainly can take his guidance, especially with our road bridge engineer.
And I would add, I didn't go back and look at the plat of Section Six, but as we've discussed on the previous item, normally, we will have language on the plats that specify that they're private roads, trying to make it clear and a public record that they're private roads. I think there has been a general practice that during closing and whatnot, it is revealed to buyers that a subdivision is a private road. I do not know if that's actually law that is required, but I think the industry does a pretty good job of letting people know that they are buying property on a private road.
And you mentioned that whenever they close...
Yeah, there is an actual road fund, and it is, it is an item on the closing documents, so it's, I believe it's thoroughly understood, anyone who buys property there...
I know Mom and Dad trained us to read the fine print, but most people, they look at that bottom line, "Yeah, I can afford that monthly note," and the rest of it is oblivious to them. And then we kind of get some of the backlash on it, so, okay. Ma'am?
Someone wanting to be recognized.
Yes, sir?
Yes, sir, my name is Luis Morales, I live here in Singleton. Also, we live on private road, and it's only half mile, so we did a bridge, we paid $18,000, and we put a bunch of condition to fix it up. So, yes, we need to know if we can get some little help to make a bridge inside, so it is half mile, so you have to do everything, we do the rest. So I do it, that's what I came up with a little practice, some neighbors helped me, some neighbors not, see what I mean, so, really, so that was nice.
Is this another area?
It's another area.
Okay.
I think this is just a discussion of the issue of private roads, and the challenges there. You don't live in Crown Ranch?
No, sir, I live in Singleton.
Okay, all right. Thank you for your promise.
I think we have a separate conversation on that topic, if you don't mind.
Thank you. Anything else?
Okay, I was gonna make the comment, the reason for the road maintenance bond on our portion is to make sure that the road is up to standards.
Yeah, and the county's process, when a subdivision is built and the roads are newly built, we require a one-year maintenance bond on that for the contractor, to make sure everything's in good shape, and then we have an extended maintenance period for another year, just to make sure, because we have had some issues in the past, and quite frankly, a lot of times, the flaws in the roads really start to become apparent when building starts and you start getting some traffic. When a subdivision is brand new and nobody lives there, all the roads hold up real well.
Right.
At some point in the past, the county adopted that process, so we have a process where there's a maintenance bond on the contractor for the full amount of the road construction costs, and then we reduce that amount and extend that maintenance period for another year. So when they are completing that second phase, they'll be done with a maintenance period whatsoever.
But what I was leading to was, this is all in an effort to try to make sure that our citizens don't buy property in a subdivision where there's substandard roads, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And also to make sure the county doesn't end up assuming maintenance on roads that are not in proper shape either.
All right, thank you.
And I'd like to comment also, even though we don't take those roads over, we do take it seriously, we pull plugs in those roads to check, and they've had to do some repairs on one about four years ago out there that was cracking. So Mike does a good job. Mike Eubanks is the contractor that's doing those, he's done a good job out there on drugs. With that being said, I move that we take action to release a road maintenance bond in the amount of $850,000 for Crown Ranch, Section Six.
Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Eleven by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Walker, you want to take us down to Agenda Item Number Twelve?
I will.
Considering a possible approval of a waterline permit for Wixen Creek SUD on County Road 172, that's our attachment twelve.
Putting on my Harry Walker hat now. This is a residential waterline service on County Road 172 for Wixen Creek SUD. It's a one-inch line, inch and a half casing. In this case, it's just a crossing providing service to new residents being built out there, and we're recommending approval.
I move to approve a waterline permit for Wixen Creek SUD on County Road 172, as presented. Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Twelve by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any discussion, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Thirteen, consideration and possible approval of special road use and indemnity agreement for Patriot demolition on CR 180, that's our attachment number thirteen.
This is a road use agreement for Patriot demolition. As you may recall, several weeks ago, we approved an agreement for them on County Road 246. As it turns out, they were doing demolition work on an old plant facility over there at that time. As it turns out, Energy Transfer has asked them to move some of the tankage that came off that site to their property on County Road 180, so they've come back and asked for a road use agreement to cover County Road 180 for the move of these, there are several large vessels from that facility. We have inspected the road and gone over the routing and the work that needs to be done on that road, and we're recommending approval.
Both of these roads are in my precinct, and I'm aware of where they're coming from and where they're going with this.
Okay.
If there are no further questions, I move that we approve the road use indemnity agreement for Patriot demolition on County Road 180.
Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Thirteen by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Cox. All in favor, say aye. Or any discussion, further discussion, I'm sorry. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Go to Agenda Item Fourteen, consideration and possible approval of an oil and gas pipeline permit for Apache Corporation for CR 126, attachment number fourteen.
Recently, you approved a permit for Apache Corporation associated with a well being drilled on County Road 126 in the oil area. They have now come back and asked for a permit for a crossing to get from the drill site to their region. In this case, it would be two four-inch lines and a common casing, it's just a crossing of the roadway. And everything, for routine, we are recommending approval on this permit application.
I move to approve the oil and gas pipeline permit for Apache Corporation on County Road 126. Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Fourteen by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Walker. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, consideration and possible approval of a renewal of the special road use and indemnity agreement for Magnolia Oil and Gas on CR 190, that's our attachment fifteen.
Magnolia Oil and Gas has recently drilled a new well on County Road 190. They are getting ready to begin their fracking operation. At last meeting, we approved a temporary waterline permit associated with this well for the fracking operation, but they need to renew and extend their special road use agreement for County Road 190, one additional 90 days to cover that construction period. And again, we are recommending approval of this permit.
This is also in my precinct, where the wells are being done in that area, and if there are no questions, I move that we approve a renewal of the special road use and indemnity agreement with Magnolia Oil and Gas on County Road 190.
Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Fifteen by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, consideration and possible approval of award for seal coating contract to Cornerstone Paving Construction LLC, our attachment number sixteen.
Recently, we opened bids for seal coat construction, or commonly known as chip sealing, for county roads. The county, in the past, we did this work internally. This year, we decided to go ahead and try having some of it contracted out. I've done an evaluation. The costs appear to be competitive with our own costs, and having the contractor do it gives us the ability to spend our time and effort on other things, and hopefully increase the amount of roadwork we can get done during our paving season. On this particular bid, we received four bids. Cornerstone Paving and Construction was the low bidder with a total amount of $297,350.56. The work included in this project is about five miles of roadway. It includes the Harrison Bracewell neighborhood, and also County Road 403 and 404, the areas we worked on over there recently. The bids ranged up to $442,000, but the bid from Cornerstone appears to be in line with the estimates we gave. I have checked their references, they've done quite a bit of work for Tech Stop, and received good references from the area engineers that have worked with them. They have advised me that because of their schedule and workload, it will likely be September before they can start this construction. So, in the meantime, the county forces are preparing the roadways, we're doing all the base preparations and those kind of things, have everything ready for them, so that when their schedule allows, they can jump in and do the chip sealing. We are recommending that the contract be awarded to Cornerstone, in the amount specified at this time.
Harry, what is your, what do you figure your cost is for the county to do what they do?
I looked at our costs, this price that they bid is about $100,000 more than our materials alone would be, not including the labor and equipment, and I had done an evaluation of the enterprises that we were... And I had done an evaluation of the unit prices that we received previously with the Washington County's bids they took earlier this year. And it came up within just a few percentage, having the contractor do the work, but having the county forces do the work. I'm really interested to see if they can do a quality job, which I think they will. I think it will be very competitive. It's going to be slightly higher because.
It's what I think, I mean, if they're, if this bid is for about five miles, it's about fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy bucks a mile.
I, I watched them last year do a chip seal. It ties, it ties up quite a bit of.
It's, it's intense operation. It takes all of one crew and half of another crew. And as a result, all our other routine operations slow down. Again, the prices that we received, I believe, are competitive. Looking at our bid prices for material and the oil and whatnot, I think this is a reasonable value for the county.
I mean, I rode on the equipment. We were chip sealing last year, but that added three people to the crew that were watching me and make sure I didn't touch anything. So I, I know it is, it's, it is, it is a labor intensive, but it just, I don't know. Once upon a time, I thought I heard that we chip seal for about ten thousand a mile. That was once upon a time, okay?
Well, let me explain. The, the, that number is out there. If you recall, we have a surfacing donation policy where residents that want to have their road sealed are able to contribute half of the cost of the materials only towards a chip sealing project. So the ten thousand dollars is a rule, um, it's not exact number. It'll reflect the residence cost, being half of the materials only.
That's not your total cost, okay.
Labor and equipment.
Well, thanks for clarifying that.
It's a bargain for the residents when they want to do that.
Right.
Because county still ends up absorbing about three quarters of the overall cost. They, because that, and we're not charging them for the base preparation or any of that work. So that's a real bargain, but that's where that number comes from. It's, it's not a figment of your imagination. I have used it before.
Okay.
But they, again, this is materials, labor, equipment, and the contractor's costs.
Is this five miles, is this on your list that we had prepared?
Yes. We, we chose one neighborhood area and, and one area that are just long straight streets to kind of get a comparison of how well their process works. The neighborhoods are harder to do. A lot more shifting, moving, and little short sections don't let themselves, the long straight roads are quick and easy. And we didn't want to give away all the quick, easy work.
So there's no way they're going to get to it before September?
That's what he's telling me. From the schedule, they have contracts that have already been awarded. Might be late August, but likely have to let them. And of course, they're, just like we are, they're subject to the winds of the weather, other natural disasters.
And this was one of the things we asked you to look into comparing. Would it be better for us in order to make strides in all of our efforts, whether it's paving, chip sealing, or whether it's mowing the roads, or whether it's maintenance of the roads? Because there was a time we did have, when the chip sealing was going on, maintenance was shut down and that was an issue.
And that's, that's the big drawback of us doing it in-house is a lost opportunity. We can't be doing routine maintenance if everybody's focused on doing chip sealing. So it makes a noticeable impact on our regular activities during the paving season.
And hopefully, this frees up enough of our workforce to where they can get out and do the mowing and the side booming and those type of things that we're now hearing from residents that the roads need.
And it, again, it's an effort to try to increase the overall amount of work we can do, more paving as well as keeping up with the regular maintenance.
But we don't do the paving though, right? That's contracted out, paving?
This, well, this, this has been contracted out, this chip sealing. I will be bringing you another bid request here shortly for a paving project. It's actual hot mix paving, the whole road construction and everything. Again, we're, we're trying to expand the amount of work we can do by utilizing some outside forces and not try to do everything in-house.
All right.
Harry, just two quick questions and I won't belabor this, but is this, the two hundred ninety-seven thousand, is that money we already have budgeted and allocated to you?
It will come out of, we have.
What about the reimbursements that we've had from some of the grants or the damage that we've had from Harvey and all of that? Is, is that help, is that part of this or is that completely separate?
Well, not directly. We put those funds back into road materials typically.
Right.
And it's kind of the road materials is the catchall for all our outside income. And then we'll do budget adjustments from time to time to move it into different areas. But, okay. We have, in the new paving projects line item, we have money allocated for the chip sealing. This will be paid out of that line item.
Okay. Thank you.
And these were roads, the bottom list that we looked at earlier.
Judge, if there's no more questions, I'd make a motion to approve the award for seal coating contract, Cornerstone Paving and Construction LLC.
A second.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 16 by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Walker. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Road and Bridge Report, sir.
Crews are busy. We're doing a lot of preparation work for the different paving projects that we've been discussing. We are completing the, the work we had to reclaim for, should be completed this week. And we're going back now and doing the next phases on those roads, bringing in rock and setting them up. Most of the roads that we did reclaiming on will be paved later in the summer, chip sealing. So a lot of that activity going on now. We're hauling a lot of rock with lease trucks to various roads. It's, it's our busy season. A couple of slightly different things. We, the, the Minnesota Junior High has a contractor working, doing some demolition work over there. They're taking out the old tennis courts, parking area drive. They are giving us that concrete. So we're hauling that material over to the, to the new yard on 2445 for use in future projects. Again, contractor just donating it to us. All these assets that we helped with the hauling, he's providing a truck, a, you know, large truck. And we're hauling supplementing that with covered bar trucks. That's, it's always nice to get those kind of materials. Our parking lot out here, we did complete the repairs here recently. I am still working on trying to get a stripper lined up to come in and do that. Again, it's their busy season and it's been a small project. I'm having a little trouble getting people interested in it. But we will get that taken care of here for not too long. Elsewhere, ditch crews is also busy. Again, they're working in, in conjunction with the paving crews on a lot of these roads and getting things prepared. Our side ditcher, he was also working in. He did over two miles of work this past period. Again, it's, it's busy season. We had a lot of activity on Hurricane Harvey grant funding, various meetings with the different towns. As you recall, the, the GLO was not willing to let the towns in the county consolidate all their projects into one effort. So we're having to work with each of the small towns independently and assist them on that grant funding. Those grants are due by the end of August, the grant applications. So continue to be working on that for a while. But it, it, that's going okay. It would have been much more efficient if we got it all consolidated at one, but that's where we're at at this point. We also had a meeting with Ms. Allen, Commissioner Dobianski, Cox, and myself. And I went in to discuss some of the continuing issues we're having. I think that went pretty well there. I think that was the message. They're continuing to tell us six more weeks to be finished. They've been hampered by the flooding on the Minnesota River and some of the work there. But I think by the end of December, then we'd be pretty well done with the project out of our hair, which would make everybody happier.
Good.
Any questions?
Just, are you still offering the overtime to the ditching crew on Friday or Saturday?
We are, we expect results.
Kind of went over like a lasso, didn't it?
It's been mixed. We have some people that are interested. Getting enough people interested at the same time to have a functioning crew has been a little bit of a challenge. And then the, we have issues whenever we have a holiday week because they don't get their time and a half. Because they, they, it has to be forty hours actually work before they draw a time and a half. So that discourages some of them. But it's, we're getting some extra things done. It hasn't been as, as, I think there's that hope.
Any other questions for Mr. Walker? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
We'll go to agenda item number 17, County Judge Joe Fouts, considering take action to approve an order of dispersment of salaries and routine office expenses. Assignment number 17. Mr. Fouts, if this is incorrect paperwork, let me know. But what I'm presenting to the court is, the governor signed a Senate bill on May the 31st of this year, Senate Bill Number 354 with the eighty-six legislature. And it's an order for dispersment of salaries and routine office expenses. And the order reads, whereas Senate Bill 35486 Legislature Session, effective May 31st, 2019, provides that county funds previously budgeted for salaries and authorized office expenses may be distributed as payment for a salary or routine office expenses. And whereas the Commissioners Court of Grimes County wishes to implement the position, the provisions of this act now, it is hereby ordered as follows. Number one, county funds previously budgeted for salaries for offices and employees shall be dispersed by the county payroll officer upon submission of all necessary payroll information by the appropriate department head or supervisor. Two, county funds previously budgeted for expenses shall be dispersed upon submission of a proper voucher. Adopted this 12th day of June, 2019 by a vote of yays and nays. So this is the order in front of us. I have met with the county auditor, I have met with the county treasurer to make sure that this language meets with their comfort zone, their approval. And since the governor has signed this bill and it is active, we, and what this ultimately means for us is that we'll go back to conducting our regular meetings on the second and the fourth Wednesday of each month. And we will not be mandated to hold a special meeting on the first, third, and fifth meetings of the month, when the fifth meeting occurs or the fifth Wednesday comes around.
Judge, the two things I would raise is in your number two, you just used the term expenses. You don't use routine office expenses as you did above that. And so maybe you want to clarify that, maybe you want it as vague as it is. And then upon submission of a proper voucher, it doesn't say to whom the voucher is submitted. So I would say if you wanted clarity on both of those, you'd say what type of expenses and to whom the voucher would be submitted.
Voucher invoice submitted to the treasurer's office.
Here, so Ms. Trant, you're saying where it says proper voucher, proper voucher or invoice submitted to treasurer's office?
Is that right?
Mary, do you, on the budgeted expenses, the, the comment that Mr. Fouts made, do you think that's a, it's not that it's not appropriate, is it a necessary addition? Because we had a conversation between the three of us, the, the more we put in here, then the more restrictive it becomes. But of course, we don't want to, we're not opening up the treasury for just anything.
Right, and let me comment before she says, I'm referring to your first paragraph. You have budgeted for salaries and authorized office expenses. And then you go on to say maybe dispersed as payment for a salary or routine office expenses. So you called it two different things there. And then down here, we just call it expenses without saying whether it's office, routine office, or some other expenses. And that's my point is to clarify so that everybody's on the same page. Otherwise, budgeted for expenses could be anything under the sun.
I think routine expenses would be fine.
Routine as such as electric bills, water bills?
Office supplies. Basically, it would be pretty much anything to run their office. And I guess really what this would prevent would be purchase of large equipment or something without it being, going through the proper process, making sure that it goes through the proper process of bids and so forth.
So on, on number two, if we insert routine before expenses, is, is that what everybody's suggesting?
That's what the auditor is suggesting, it's not what I'm suggesting, because now you're giving it three different terms.
Okay.
The first one is office expenses, the second is routine office expenses, and now you would be saying routine expenses.
Okay, routine office expenses.
Young said however you want, I just want to meet twice a month.
I, I get it, Judge, I get it. I can assure you that you will have questions about this.
Office expenses, would that work? Counselor?
It, it matters not to me, it's the intent of the folks. I just want to be sure it's clear, otherwise you're going to have lots of questions about, is this a routine office expense? Is this just an expense? Or is this an office, office expense? So I'm just asking that you, you clarify so you don't field a bunch of questions about it.
Would you start at the top and look on?
I was born on a Wednesday.
Not in the beginning, on the top of this page. The language that you suggest change or how it should be changed.
Okay, I'll start at the top. There are three times that you refer to this. Okay. The, the title says routine office expenses. The first paragraph says authorized office expenses. Then, in that same sentence, it uses the phrase routine office expenses. And then in number two, you have budgeted for expenses.
Okay. What, what should be the term we use consistently throughout?
You can use, the statute says expenses authorized by law. If you want to be vague, you can leave that what, what the statute says. I'm fine with routine office expenses. All I'm suggesting is make it the same at every place.
Consistence.
Yeah, I, I get it. I get that. I'm fine with routine office expenses.
So the, the title says routine office expenses. The first paragraph says salary or routine office expenses, so those two are consistent.
Why not use routine office expenses in all three places? All four.
Which is, which is in the number two, add routine office expenses?
Right, but also in the first sentence, you say authorized office expenses. You don't have routine.
Oh, okay. An authorized routine office expenses.
Yes, sir.
All right, I got that one. And then the only other place we would need to do is in the sec, in item number two, county funds previously budgeted for routine office expenses.
Absolutely.
Is that right, Ms. Auditor?
And Judge, would you make comments about what we had discussed between the treasurer and yourself and I?
No, because I don't remember, but if you'll state them.
The emails that Ms. Trant's office will send out each week on the deals?
Oh.
Now, I've got something else before we go to that. You're saying routine office expenses. Office expenses to me is like calculators, pencils, stuff like that. Why not operating? Because you have to have so much to operate your office. Because you have to have so much to operate your office. And that would cover Roden Bridge and the DSO.
That's a question I have on Roden Bridge too, because sometimes we get invoices that if we pay them by a certain date, we get a discount on paying that bill. In the past, when we were able to approve those with the judge and one commissioner, until Commissioners' Court, we could get that savings. With the routine office expense, that's not going to happen. There would be a question in my mind about doing that, paying that early to get that done, so we could get the savings on that, on that invoice.
Operating would cover it.
Yeah.
So change office to operating.
Yes.
Y'all don't want to stay to see how this turns out?
We'll get next item on the, on that.
I've got a question on this subject. Will this exempt items that require a line item transfer? Because they're neither routine or budgeted. So are we going to continue, are we going to fund those?
Well, line, line item transfers, I mean, that's a routine part of our business. The monies are budgeted. It might move from box A to box B, but at least we've, we've allowed them, those elected officials or those department heads, that money.
Yeah, but if it's for a specific purpose, a specific thing, it was not routine in their budget.
Or we can just do what the bill says. What was the exact wording of the bill?
This is what Tac sent me, so I thought it would be okay. But you know how one attorney reads another attorney's paperwork? I'm sorry for wanting it to be clear.
No.
Shame on me.
I appreciate it. It's worth, it's worth, I mean, that's why we had an initial discussion between myself, auditor, and treasurer. Just that you proved us wrong. That's okay.
I would suggest it would be better served in the long run if I stick with the wording of the legislation and keep it as broad as possible. You don't know what's going to come up in the future that might be limited, so I'm restricting it.
Well, we always have the opportunity to have the emergency meeting or the special meeting. What we're trying to get, what I'm trying to get away from is the auditor and the treasurer feeling uncomfortable with us not approving on a weekly basis. But since we have this legislation, now that takes the heat off of them. We just need to make sure that everybody understands what we're doing and how they can approve it. Janice?
With that being said, we did have a discussion between you, Mary, and I, that Heather is not going to hold bills because they are just humongous if it's twice a month that y'all approve them. We would like to keep our vendors happy and have them weekly, just like they've always been, with you as a court receiving a packet via email, and then just email her back saying that y'all have put your eyes on it, and y'all are comfortable with it, and we'll rock and roll. And it makes our life easier and it satisfies our vendors.
And for the most part, all of those will probably go through without an issue, but if you had a question on one, or you had a question on one, that one might get held until we get into it in a court, which is going to be in a week.
The new bill uses two different phrases. I don't know that you want to use this, and it's up to you whether you want to have it as vague as possible, but first it says expenses authorized by law, and then the other is authorized expenses of the office.
I like the last.
I don't really care. I just, you need to have it clear, because you're going to face this issue from department heads and elected officials, because they won't know what that means. What time do I have to ask permission, and what time can I do, pull the trigger on my own?
I mean, I'm just throwing this out there. I think if it requires a line item transfer or any deviation from the already budgeted amount, that that's probably something that needs to be brought back for Comis, to Commissioners' Court from a budgeting standpoint.
Couldn't that be brought before to, you know, weeks, two times that y'all meet?
It could.
Yeah.
But it's not going to be one of those bills that's going to be paid immediately, or potentially.
Like he said, that could be pulled.
But we're not going to know that unless you tell us that, per se.
Or is the line item transfer already done after the fact that they're paid anyway?
Or is there more?
Yeah, but there's still the opportunity for the Commissioners' Court to question that.
We're just trying to keep it simple.
Just saying.
What's your recommendation?
But, I mean, I think if it's going to require an adjustment in the budget via a line item transfer or budget amendment, that we probably need to lay eyeballs on that, because we did, it's kind of contradictory to what this states. It wasn't a budgeted expense, nor is it a routine expense. But general day-to-day operation, as long as you don't operate outside of your already budgeted line item, I don't have a problem with that.
But if we put in authorized expense of the office, that would be the authorized budget of the office, right? Would that cover that?
Do you want to see the line item transfer?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, you definitely want to see that, but as I said, we've authorized up to that point in the, in the budgets, so anything else above that would have to come to us first. And part of your concern is that we're shifting money from one box to another box from the way it was budgeted.
Right.
Let me point out that not all line item transfers have to come before Commissioners' Board, because there's a lot. Because in the office supplies and operating.
The four hundreds.
All through the four hundreds, the department heads can move that money around as they see fit. And it's just, they can't move money to or from any of the five hundred or six hundred accounts up to the operating expense, and they can't move any from operating down to the others. So I see what you're saying, and what we can do is, you know, maybe a little more proactive and contact the departments if we see that the invoice is going to put them over their budget. Contact them and say, you need to do a line item transfer before we can pay this.
And you're talking about budgeting, they don't see the line item transfers.
They do see some line item transfers.
But not all of it.
But not all of it. And I'll have to tell you, Ms. Lisa is really good. Every week when she runs the report, she sees an apartment that has items that are over their budget, she calls them, so.
Judge, if I could just make the suggestion, maybe it makes Mr. Cox happy, maybe it doesn't. Authorized office expenses is in the second line of the body. That's the same thing as authorized expenses of the office. So why don't we take out routine and say authorized office expenses and use that everywhere?
We're using authorized.
Office expenses. It still leaves open the question of what's authorized, but so does the statute, and my thought is if it's budgeted to you at the beginning of the budget year, that's authorized for you to use. The auditor or treasurer can flag it if it's an improper use.
Right. Now, down in number two, that would also change.
Use the same thing, authorized office expenses, and then add or invoice to treasurer at the end of that. And then someone call Tac and tell them that their order is defi-
Just send them your revision. Commissioners, are y'all good with that language change?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Then I make the motion that, I'd like to make the motion we approve the order for dispersment of salaries and routine office authorized. Do I need to add that there?
It's, right, in the title, it's going to be everywhere. So everywhere that shows, everywhere you see expenses, we're going to make that authorized office expenses.
Authorized routine office expenses.
Authorized office expenses.
Authorized office expenses.
Routine is dead.
You're taking routine out and putting in authorized office expenses. That's my motion.
Second.
And that it will be a proper voucher invoice submitted to the treasurer, right?
Yes.
And do I need to send you all the procedure as how this is going to work out?
It would not hurt.
I mean, if you think it would help in people's understanding, department heads and elected officials, including us, yes. Sheree, did you get all those appropriate changes? Okay. There is a motion before the court. I'm sorry, Commissioner Walker, you made the motion, did you not? Commissioner Malick, you seconded.
Commissioner Dobianski.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Seventeen by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. So this allows us for a public notice, or do we need to put a public notice out, John?
Not having meetings anymore?
Correct.
Wednesday?
On the first, third, and fifth.
You certainly have a meeting.
If we don't send an agenda out, is that enough of a notice?
Yeah, right, right, right.
And you may note it on the website, you know, like your header.
I don't want people showing up on the odd Wednesdays and be disappointed. Okay. Moving right along. Agenda Item Number Eighteen, discussion and sharing of information regarding situations where any slash all county offices need to be shut down due to unforeseen circumstances. Situation occurred week before last or two weeks ago, we had a power outage, a power outage. It affects my, something happened, and people couldn't work. Anyway, I was in Houston trying to gin up business for the county, so I was out of the office. I had a call. I didn't answer the call. At the time, Commissioner Dobianski was in my office area. I believe Sheree Wagner goes, what should we do? Commissioner Dobianski was there. He said, let people go home since it can't work. Called back at noon because the power was supposed to be back on at about that time. I don't think too many people called back in to see if it was back on, but that's another issue we can deal with. But the, I guess the question came up, or it comes up, who should make that call? Normally, in emergency situations, well, like on the icing, I've made the call before, because we had kind of a weather forecasting, knew what's coming on, or we put the word out first thing in the morning. This occurred in your precinct, although it was just by chance you happened to be there. Normally, Commissioner Walker, when I'm not in, on location, then the responsibilities fall to you. So I wanted to make sure that we just had an understanding, because Commissioner Malick, if maybe the power goes off up in Precinct One area, you may be in a better position to call the shot versus me if I'm present, or Commissioner Walker from her Precinct Three location.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Upon my understanding of this, I don't, now, you may have a concern in that area. My concern was not who makes the call, but elected officials have the ability to operate their offices how they want to.
Right.
Now, I'll be addressing that, because as me as another elected official, I can't tell the district attorney or to shut down her office. It's up to each individual elected official how they operate their offices, but the offices that sit on the Commissioners' Court, Commissioners' Court, we can make the call on. Can you clarify that a little bit more?
No, I agree with you entirely, and keep in mind, you're dealing with two different issues here, and one is the safety of whether folks should have to come in, and then whether people should be paid for a day off that was out of their control. Those are, they're political ramifications, in addition to financial ramifications. And so if I were in your shoes, I would want the elected official to suffer whatever those ramifications are, good or bad. They get the credit for staying on, they get the disappointment of the ire of the people for letting folks go home. When you send somebody home for a day and the power was out for an hour, who made that call? I mean, that, in my mind, I'm thinking you leave that to the elected official. And for instance, when this call was made the other day, the sheriff's office has a generator, and so Cory's not going home, and I'm not excusing Cory from work because everybody else got cut loose, but, you know, there could be some frustration about why did these officers get off for the day and they got paid for it? That's an elected official decision.
Well, Sheree, who called you?
Much time.
Who all called you, what do we do?
Everybody.
So who's everybody?
Treasurer's Department, Auditor's Department, Human Resources, Roden Bridge, County Clerk, everybody.
Okay.
When I, when I, let me, let me step in here.
All right.
Because when I walked in here that morning, nobody knew I was here, but very quickly, they knew I was here over in the judge's office, because somebody called over and told them. Everybody that I talked to in here said it was hot, they were fanning each other, and they couldn't do anything because the computers were out. We had people coming to get their license plates, and they couldn't issue them because they didn't have computers. I went over to the office because they had sent for me to come over there, and I was told that they had called a local Entergy office and said that it would be noon before the lights came back on. And so with that information, I made a decision to allow these people to let their employees, I said, send this out, allow them to leave, but the lights should come on by noon, so let, have them check back at noon and come back in. We did that. After I did that, I called Victor Enmon, who is the regional supervisor for Entergy, and I have his phone number, and I'd like for each of you to have it, and asked him, you know, what time our lights were going to come back on. He was not even aware that the lights were out. He said, let me check, and I will get back with you. I went across the street to have a meeting with Commissioner Walker, excuse me, Commissioner Cox, and Mr. Walker that morning with Magellan, and during the meeting, I got a call from Victor, and he said our lights should be on shortly. Well, they came on about ten-thirty that morning, and that was the decision that I made. But I think in the future, if we have an outage, instead of going to the local people, go to the regional supervisor, because he's going to call them and find out what's going on, and they will get more on the ball on getting the lights back on, and you'll have better information to get, to make a decision.
But, but also in the future, and I appreciate, do you want to give us his phone number?
Yes, his number is nine-three-six-five-two-five-two-oh-seven-four, and again, his name is Victor Enmon, E-N-M-O-N. He is, he is acting right now, because Tracy's out, Tracy, who is the supervisor, regional supervisor, is out on maternity leave.
Right.
And when she comes back, well, then I'll share her information with you all.
So, and Commissioner Walker, I agree with what you said. It's the elected official's call.
Yes.
But I don't want my office, or somebody's calling Sheree and say, you know, what's the judge want to do, or what have you. I don't want you to be abrupt and say, make up your own mind, but I guess, but, but in seriousness, I think that's, you know, if your ladies call, my office is really, your call, Janice, and auditor, I don't know, I guess you call the district judge? Seriously? Okay. So, I mean, I'm okay to step in when they can't make the contact, or if they need a decision made, I'm okay with that. Whether it's a right decision or a wrong decision, I can make the decision.
And let me say, I don't think we're criticizing Commissioner Dobianski.
No, no.
He was doing the best he could at the time, but I am saying to you that there may be bosses who say, I think you can work by phone light, get your phone out, we're going to stay, and there may be bosses that say, you folks go home. That's a political issue. Each, each elected official- Each, each elected official or department head is running a business, and you have to decide how you're going to run a business. And you're going to let folks off because, you know, somebody doesn't feel well today, or because, you know, there's a little bit of rain outside, or whatever. That may be the way that you run your office, but you may suffer at the, at the polling place. You may lose your spot, and that, that shouldn't be for you all to decide, any of you have to decide across the county whether to let somebody go home or not let somebody go home. That should be up to the elected official. Now, it still begs the question of what do you do for those departments that are subordinate to you? 911, and environmental, and Roden Bridge, do you make the call on those folks, or do you let the department heads help you make that call? And you also, keep in mind, you also are in charge of every county building, so you have that in addition to be concerned about. Is it safe to be in a building? Do we want the public coming in and out of a dark building?
Agreed.
You've got a lot of things to think about, so it's not as easy as a snap decision, but I would think that as an elected official, it would be easier for me to say, let me call the sweet old kind judge who's put in a horrible spot trying to make a decision across the county, and get him to say, shut everything down, then when I fade the heat from my constituents, I say, no, it wasn't me, it was the judge. And I don't think you want that. I, I think you need to leave it to the elected officials who are in a better spot to decide, because in Precinct One, they may have power and be fine up there. Out over now and so, they may be fine over there. You shouldn't have to field all over county.
Well, in Precinct Three was operational, right? Weren't you?
Right. And my, my other thing was, like you said, with the department head, Roden Bridge doesn't work in an office, most, their workers are outside, probably working somewhere, and then we shut them down, and they're gone.
No, they didn't.
Well, I'm just saying, that could be, and, and under that same circumstance, I think we had a statement before that would cover when that occurs, and it stated each elected official had the ability to close their offices, but the office under such, we have decided to, you know, he has a blank statement that he used to would give to Michelle, issue the, directed. But she did call me, Judge, she called me, and it was about 15 minutes later when I called her back, and by that time she had talked to Commissioner Dobianski.
Because he was on site.
Yeah, because he was on site. But, but my question is, each elected official, like we say so many times with the budget and everything else, they have the ability, like you said, they run their own departments, and so it's their call.
Right.
Like the district attorney had a grand jury upstairs, they were trying to seat, and, you know, she wasn't willing to send all of those people home, you know, after calling them in. So it, it's just a question of, you know, how we should handle that at that particular time. I just kind of wanted that open for discussion.
And I think this discussion helps remind us who really has the responsibility, and we're going to hit, I mean, we're going to make some balls and strikes along the way.
And you're going to fade, there's going to be a circumstance, and just see it coming, there's going to be a circumstance where one office decides to close and another doesn't decide to close, and then you're going to get the bill where all the people are wanting to be paid for that time, and the elected official is saying, pay my folks for that time. And then you're going to have other folks that are angry because they had to come to work and they didn't get the day off paid, like everybody else. But that, unfortunately, is up to elected officials, and it really is up to the constituents to say, this is not the elected official we want in the office who's going to send their people home when the power's out for 10 minutes. And I'm not saying that's what happened, but it's hyperbolic. Yeah. I'm not saying you, don't be, I'm burning. I know you. My, my point is that it should, it should be on the shoulders of the elected official, and where that rub comes essentially is going to be at whether people vote them out of office or leave them in office because they're good managers of people, good managers of tax dollars, and that's, it shouldn't be all on your shoulders.
You mentioned working by, by phone with the flashlight, that actually happened here during one of the floods, Roden Bridge, Patty and Miss Bobby was working on their cellphones, talking to the crews out, because we were out, we didn't have electricity yet one morning.
Well, we've discussed this, and we've shared information because you've given us the phone number and name at Entergy, so we're going to then move on to Agenda Item Number 19, consider and take action regarding the burn ban and authorize the county judge's signatory. I recommend we take no action, however, I think I'd ask all the commissioners to pay particular attention because looking at the forecast, we are coming into a bit of a dry stretch here, and that's good for people to get some things done, but they'll also start burning, so please be aware so the next, because it's going to be two weeks before we visit. And so if there's a concern or issue, please let me know. Okay? So with that, we'll take no action at this time. Agenda Item Number 20, are there any updates on the strategic plan?
Commissioner Malick, anything from P-GAL?
We're still waiting on some other, we're still waiting on some information from them to set up a new meeting, another meeting.
Should we go camp out on their doorstep?
Probably.
Okay, all right. There's no further business, is there a motion to adjourn, Agenda Item Number 21?
Move to adjourn.
There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Malick to adjourn, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.